Do you have time?
Just a taser.
Right there, sorry. I'll take it back, I'll take it back this way. The mayor's high.
I'll send him over there to get the picture.
Hurry up. She's got a call.
You got it.
I already gave it to him. I gave it to him at our orientation room.
Just jump in.
I don't know, but imagine how it's gonna look if you really do are like this.
Like, come on out.
Can you Photoshop this emperor right looking?
Well, I was below this thing.
I hope that we use that picture. I hope we do.
Send it to the person, everybody will be tan and perfect skin.
Don't doubt my ability.
Light teeth and all those, all those things.
The time is now 6:00 PM and we'll call this meeting to order.
Please join me in praying. Most loving and giving Father, we thank you for bringing us all here together on this stormy night. We are blessed by all you provide for us and we praise you with thanks. We lift up our police officers. Please spread your arms of protection around them. We are thankful for their service. Please spread that protection over all first responders. Tonight, we welcome new council members and are grateful for their willingness to serve their community. Please grant all council and staff wisdom and discernment to lead this city, not for our own priorities, but for the good of the city. We pray this, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the glory to stand, one nation, under God, invisible for liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and invisible.
Okay, we have all council member present, new council members, that is, and current. Do we have any public comments? All right, thank you, sir. Moving on to the consent agenda, approval of minutes from called meeting held December 11th, 2023. Anyone wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The record reflect, the motion carries. Okay, discussion and action items, preliminary review and action on replat of lots one and seven of 10B Richwood addition, also known as 2002 Brazisport Boulevard North.
So this is a replat of the CrossFit gym that's down Brazisport Boulevard. They have been working on an expansion project and through that they, plan review advised them that they would need a replat to continue the expansion they had planned. So this has gone to our plan reviewers and everything's good to go. We just need to get council approval.
Anyone wish to make a motion on this?
How do we confirm that they own both the properties? Is that?
The appraisal district records.
So that's confirmed before it comes to us, I guess? I would like to just point out a note, I went and walked the property. Seems like there's a residential possibly next to it. I don't think it matters as far as the replat is concerned, but they, as far as drainage, it doesn't seem as adequate on that side of the extending that replat and taking that center drain out. Doesn't matter, though, as far as a replat, because if they build two buildings, it's gonna have the same issue as if they build one building.
They have not signed it yet, but their plans have been approved. They're just waiting for their next meeting to sign the milars. So it's been approved by drainage.
It's been approved by drainage already?
They just haven't had their meeting yet to do what y'all do. So tomorrow, they're gonna come pick up the milars from me. And then I can't file that with the county until they sign off on it. So it won't be finalized until the drainage district does approve or signs off on it.
I'll make a motion to approve item A.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let the record reflect, the motion carries. This meeting is adjourned, on to the regular held meeting.
Five minutes. Yes, if you want to take a minute and sign, you can go ahead and sign. Both, if you'd like.
With the blue sharpie pen?
Yes, so there's two copies. And there's two, there's actually one. So you have five minutes.
We're gonna add another chair here.
Alternate, alternate A.
One A.
They'll sign in two.
Who else to sign, everybody? Okay, I'll let everybody go first. And then we'll go back over there.
You guys gotta go sign that milar Mackie Dog and all?
So next, yeah, the gym that's there.
Up front?
Yeah, they own that. Yeah. And they, so they own a lot that's closer to Lauren's house.
Okay.
They're, they're having that.
And then CCA, talking to land way back there.
Replat, but they're gonna courtyard it between, so they're kinda connected. Mark it out.
She just didn't have any. I told you about my friend, my coworker friend that had triplets, right? Three girls.
They were, thought they were done? And they wanted to have one, right?
Uh huh, yeah, they wanted one more baby. Yeah, no IVF, nothing.
Going from two or three to six?
We'll think about three.
Well, two is greater than one. Three, yes, I'm like, oh, I'm running. Got a little cabana boy in Mexico. With the umbrella in.
It's not gonna work. Doesn't matter, you can't call him. As long as rejecting everybody.
Thanks for, thanks for. Yeah, get those quick.
He's never like, he didn't know the phone call or text or anything. Like, the last few days, it's like he's non-existent, just like straight to waste ball. Now you gave him a way out.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Now you gave him a way out.
No. That's my.
Just thinking, a few days, I'll have to come up with a new reason.
Back to quietness in a couple minutes. How've you been, Mike? Any fishing? Any luck? I'm living vicariously, 'cause I don't get to do it. Raise your right hand, chief.
You have a little zip come or something on the side of your barge? It's a little down timer, you know?
When it's that Captain Marks, you won't believe how much stuff people leave on that thing. And they won't tell them to stay off of it. There's always fishing line on it.
Is that your boat?
It's a rusty. So we're gonna need the bar for fishing.
Fun is weird.
I made sure it works.
Oh, it still, it shows it's still going out.
What service do you?
You ready?
Eighteenth tier?
Be the day.
Said it was a solar flare.
The next one? Okay.
Every time she's.
Forever ruining my phone.
Council members are still present. I'm pretty sure we don't have any public comment from last time, so we're still good. Moving on to the proclamation, which is Police Week proclamation, which is May 12th through the 18th, 2024. This proclamation declares, just do hereby proclaim, May 12th through the 18th, 2024 Police Week. In the City of Richwood, and urge each and every citizen to honor the Richwood Police Officers for their dedicated service to the City of Richwood. Whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May 15th falls on National Police Week. And whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the City of Richwood play an important role in safeguarding those duties and responsibilities of their police department and that members of our department recognize their duty to serve the police by safeguarding life and property, protecting them against violence or disorder, and protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas our police, Richwood Police Department has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency of nine sworn officers who unceasingly provide a vital public service. Therefore, we tweak in the City of Richwood and urge our citizens to join in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their communities, have established for themselves the right and security of all citizens. In testimony whereof, witness my hand as a seal of the City of Richwood, this 13th day of May. Thank you, guys. Okay, moving on to our consent agenda. Investment report, quarter two fiscal year 2024, approval of minutes from regular meeting held April 8th, 2024.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let the record reflect. You ready? Okay. Discussion and action items. A, final review and action on replat of lots one and. Boulevard North.
So this is just formality to finalize the replat.
Make a motion to approve item A.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let the record reflect, the motion carries. Okay, discussion and action item B. Discuss and consider extending a service agreement with Strand Engineering that would.
Non-monetary formality, if you will. This services agreement allows Strand to be our engineering firm. We've had discussion about this in the. Basically a standing, existing agreement, again, non-monetary, this is not bid. But what it does is it allows us to have emergency task orders, construction cost opinions, and engineering design services immediately upon request by the city. And it's, we'd like to, staff recommends we reapprove it again for two more years.
I'll make a motion to approve item B. Aye.
Okay, let the record reflect, the motion carries. Discussion and action item C. Discuss and consider resolution 24-R-86, appointing the fabulous Mike Johnson as the City of Richwood representative for Brazisport Water Authority Board.
Staff recommends careful consideration for Mike Johnson for the position for the Brazisport Water Authority Board. This is a position that's progress moving forward as we, you know, develop the Harris Reservoir and other projects that are going through expansion at this time. And we feel it's very important for continuity to have somebody who has firsthand knowledge of this, as Mike does, so staff recommendation is that.
I think it's a good one.
Is Mike here?
Right back there?
Oh, there you are.
Mike, Mike, Mike.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Let the record reflect.
Thank you for stepping up, Mike.
It's the guy with the dollar on his head.
Okay, discuss. You want me to read them all?
Um, no, we just need to go through them and first see if we have any volunteers for each board. If you wanna keep your board, that's fine, we don't have to swap. We just do this annually. So we need to appoint CCPD.
I'd like to stay on the fire department, personally. We've made some progress this year with the relationships and recruiting and I think it's a good fit.
Who did CCP?
The other Mike.
KRB, do we have any volunteers on that one?
I can do that. Thank you, sir.
So if anybody wants to make a.
Wait a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let the record reflect, the motion carries, thank you, guys.
Appreciate y'all.
Are up there right now, so what do those entail? Like crime control and prevention, what is, what is that?
So one quarter of one percent of every penny of sales tax. They allocate that. Each board, we appoint a liaison from council to just kinda sit in and come in and report back to council. So they'll meet, like CCPD, for instance, meets quarterly. So Will will go to the meeting, just kinda listen in and then report back at the very next council meeting. Or if anything's coming up, they will just be of assistance. There are biannually or quarterly pension review board meetings and so Mike would attend those meetings and just offer any council assistance.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Okay. The time.
Do you have a paper? For that?
Tape, notes, and then I will put that in everything and I'll have one kind of.
I noticed that. Looks like I'm walking home.
It's harder to enjoy yourself.
Where'd our crowd go?
They didn't like our joke. We tried to get Mike to see what it's like on this side during the executive session.
Wouldn't say.
Peace out.
They don't wanna take any pause in action, do you? Okay. Okay, the time is now 6:54 and there were no actions taken in result to our executive session at this time. Okay, on to capital improvements project.
I'll need a little bit of context, I thought. Which is a CAC or Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, which is a required committee or board. Yes, we have, when we have impact fees implemented. With the review coming up, we're supposed to be meeting once annually, and so on and so forth. So this, really tonight is just to let you guys know that if we are not wanting to pursue a totally separate board, which we tried in the past, it's volunteer, it doesn't work. You guys serve as PNZ and also can serve as a CAC, but we have to have one other voting member date land development, something like that. So we wanna anticipate a first meeting in June to catch council up with the current list of capital improvements projects, which was basically set forth by Freezer Nichols back in 2018. And just get reestablished before. Data, possibly new fee schedule or potential fee schedule. The only other thing, we have a couple of people be happy to reach out. Somebody in real estate or construction or land development.
Who would they reach out to?
I would reach out to, yeah, yeah, I would reach out to them.
Oh, you'd reach out to them?
A phone number and ask if they're interested in serving. So I say it's just once a year that CAC needs to meet and just kinda go over the thing. And this is just a compliance, so we're.
We did, once a month during the council meetings, anyway. This is a formality that will make the CAC is really what it should be doing, is meeting once a year to cover the same thing we cover once a month.
Yes, and there are, thank you, Eric, and there's, they're to fund. And those probably need to be talked about as well. Sometimes we don't always bring them up. But we need to review those as well. So that's a CAC there and the remainder, our projects are moving along. They hit overdrive with the south, they're gonna be, they've already tied in the, the new, new piping to the distribution main line. They're already working on, they're fixing to start tying in the underground piping on the tank side with all the pump, pump piping motors, everything's in place. Through a series of taking the pumps down out of Skates so they can do what they need to do, bring them back up, nobody worry, we've got plenty of water. But we'll have to, we don't want those pumps hooked into Skates and be called up with the pumping against, it won't be a problem. The, the generator project, I understand they've already started the submittals to the engineers and they're reviewing those right now. MIT mod project, I think, and then the bid schedule will move forward. And of course, the impact fees, we have the task order signed back to Strand Associates. Everything in place, they'll be working on that, we should, and how it's going. They're gonna, they're gonna ask, they're gonna come to us and ask, gonna be a certain amount of questions, probably more having to do with land use assumption than anything. A lot of it is about the property across the street. We've, we've been through this before. And as far as infrastructure goes, in the past, the city has not been overly eager to fund the amount of infrastructure it would take to support another thousand acre development. So we're quite certain, or how we feel now, that, that that's gonna be, well, the council before you did too. So, yeah.
I don't think anyone wants an Oakwood Shores repeat.
Well, and it's, yeah, and it's, you know, that, it could be many different things. But regardless.
That's really all I have. Thank you. Have you heard the GLO about the water plant? About the water plant?
TCQ? Reached out twice, been passed around a little bit, but I have talked to somebody in, in that, that particular department, sorry, I don't remember the department, but it's. And they knew, they knew about it and they were supposed to reach out weeks ago and not hear back. I just have to.
Reply?
Well, 186 days at that point in time, I'm responsible for contacting them back. It hadn't been that yet, but we've already reached out twice. And I'll just, I'll just keep reaching out, try to bug them as often as I can to it.
Are you handing?
Yes.
I appreciate it. Okay, moving on to city managers' report.
Mayor, Council?
What's the permitting issue in Oakwood Shores? Seems like we always have a permitting issue in Oakwood Shores.
Yeah, this was a, again, it was a project started without a permit. Then the permit was starting to get issued and they needed another letter and, but I believe we, I believe it's all taken care of now, I believe the permit was issued today. Or the inspection happened today, so should be done.
So do they also need permission from the POA?
Yes.
In addition to a permit?
They're supposed to.
So none of that was acquired?
I think the whole process was jumbled up, with material messed up, but Mike knows more about this.
I'll be happy to fill you in on that, if you'd like.
I'm just trying to figure out why there's always confusion with any, when you guys purchase property there and you have to sign an agreement with the POA, correct?
You're supposed to.
And are there statements in there that talk about permits being acquired, permission being acquired? So they just.
This is not agenda. After the meeting. Two of you can talk.
Okay, is that it, Eric?
That's it.
Thank you, Sheriff. Councilmember Staubert, you have anything to add, sir? Councilmember Challenger?
Yeah, sure, so it's full circle, we've, one year. I think we've, we're, got a whole combined two and a half years of experience up here now, so we should be proud of ourselves. Be good that we share our, share some of our advice, things that we've learned. I wish that that would have happened with me. My advice would be go climb up a mountain, look down into the city and tell me what you see, so.
You got a mountain right there?
Yeah, maybe take a lift if you have to.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Reynolds?
Last meeting, we talked about the textile recycling units and those have been placed at the community garden, they're available for use, they are for textiles. The primary reason for those is to keep textiles out of the. Or a profit scheme. It's just part of Keep Textiles Beautiful's initiative to keep as much product as we can out of landfills.
Have you had any mattresses yet?
Have not seen any yet.
I wanna be the first one there. Next up is Councilmember Yerson.
Just happy to be here, look forward to it.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Fountain?
The, the Police Week that we're having, you know, if you see the police out, you know, a thankless job and I think nowadays, police kinda get a bad rep and, and it's something that they choose to do. It's not an easy job by, by any means and I think if you, you see the police out there, you should always take time to say hello or thank them and they do, they do a good job. So I kinda, I wanna.
Thank you very much.
That's it. Thank you, sir. Okay, I would like to also thank Chief and all. You guys put on a suit every day and you're heroes, so thank you, guys. I wanna wish my lovely wife a happy birthday, today is her birthday, the odds of her being, having a birthday, so. Other than that, I appreciate what each of our department does for the City of Richwood. Congratulations to our new council members. I look forward to you guys for at least a year, maybe longer, if y'all stick it out. And, does anybody have any of those?
No, other than Memorial Day's coming, I don't think we, we won't meet before then, so.
Think Mike might have one, did you?
Sure, well, Happy Month today, number one. Number two, Penguin Project's going on, they, these special needs kids have been working real hard, it's production this weekend, so.
Is that the college?
Mm-hmm, Clarion, I think is what they call it.
What time?
Uh, it's Friday, so I don't know the exact times, but it's this weekend. So about six o'clock, I think is when it starts, but.
Okay.
I don't know exactly what.
At the college, yeah, okay.
We've been working three hours a day for the last couple months, so it's, these.
Okay. Future agenda items?
Looks like we'll have GIS demo, cliff, have a service award, possible another replat and.
Also have a variance coming.
And the following week after that meeting, we will have our.
Yes, budget workshop.
Budget workshop.
That's June.
Seven.
Okay. Take a vote on what we're gonna need for that?
Not, not FEDIS.
Whatever the mayor's buying. There you go.
Not FEDIS.
Well, the time is now.